It is 5:35. I will call to order the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. The one item on the agenda this evening is the public hearing on the Texas Academic Performance Report, and so I will call to order the public hearing, and I will turn it over to Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, members of the public, members of the board. The Texas Academic Performance Report is released annually and provides a tremendous resource for parents. It is our accountability report card, if you will, and it includes a wide range of information for all school districts across the state. The report comes at the district level, the campus level. You can look at regional and statewide reports, and I know on behalf of our administrative team, we use our TAPER report weekly to analyze the effectiveness and improvements of our district compared to other school districts that have similar demographics. Very proud of the work that is being documented in the presentation you will see. Having said that, we still have a long way to go, and so we received this report in December, and I believe state law or some type of policy indicates that we're supposed to show this, share this with the public in the form of a hearing, and this completes that mandate. With that, I'd like to introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, who will take us through the presentation. You have a copy of it in the presentation that's prepared for the board. Please help me welcome Dr. Scott McClanahan. Dr. McClanahan?
Good evening, board members. So, I'm really excited to be able to share the TAPER report with you this year because of the incredible growth that we continue to see in our students across the district. We start off looking at our star percent of approaches grade level of all of our grades in all of our subjects, and this year, we were up 4% to 64%, whereas the state only grew 2% and the region 1%, which is continually closing the gap. Last year, we closed this gap 2%. This year, we closed it another 2%. So, that type, with that type of growth, we're really going to see ourselves above the district in a very rapid pace. Once they take that and they break it down, next, we see all grades for reading, and since I know that this is a particularly important one because of our board goals, this last year, we were up 4% to 60% at approaches grade level, whereas the state was only up 2% and the region up 1%. So, again, we outpaced both the region and the state in terms of percentage growth. In math, we were up to 69%, which was 3% up from the previous year, whereas the state, again, was up 2% and the region up 1%. And the one problem area that we really saw early when we were getting scores is writing, and we not only saw that, that problem with the writing, but we saw it across the state. So, in the writing category, we were down 2%, and the region and state were both down 1% as well. That really has to do with the fact that a lot of emphasis is being placed on reading and math by the new accountability system and less emphasis on writing across the state. However, we have had a big push in the district this year in terms of focusing on grammar and writing both, all the way down into the kindergarten level. In the approaches grade level for science, we made a tremendous gain of 6%, whereas the state only made a 1% gain, and the, and the region held steady at the same rate as last year. Similarly, in social studies, we were up 5% from 2017, where the state and the region only grew 1. And you can see, those numbers are all getting extremely close. One of the areas that we always keep an eye on is attendance, not only because of its impact on funding, but also because we know that if students aren't in school, that they can't be learning the material that they need, and which affects all of the other scores. And so, we're happy to report that for the class of 2000, or for the year 2016-17, because we always run a year behind with attendance, we were actually up a half a percent, where the state was down a tenth of a percent and the region held steady. The next important figure that we look at is our annual dropout rate, and in the grades 7 and 8 dropout, we actually held steady with the prior year's dropout rate, whereas we saw the state was down a tenth and the region was up a tenth. One of the things that we did talk about in our district leadership team meeting was giving a little bit more focus on our ELL students at the middle school level, because we did see that we had a .7% gain in dropout rate amongst that group. Similarly, if we look at the 9 through 12 rate, we see that our largest gain for our dropouts at the 9 through 12 level were, again, with our ELL students. And we know that they are, especially when they come to us in the secondary grades, it is especially difficult for them to catch up to the level of academic vocabulary they need, to keep up with the learning that they need in the classroom when their English might be extremely limited. So, our bilingual ESL department has done a tremendous job at having interventionists and newcomer specialists go out and work with these students, but we can see that this is an area that we still need to put continual focus on. Overall, though, that increased our district dropout rate .6%. The region was up .1% and the state was actually down .1%. So, this is, for me personally, being over secondary education, this is an especially important figure for me. The next statistic that was shared on the TAPER report that is new this year is college career military readiness. And since we had not presented this data before, I wanted to make sure that you could actually see what the different indicators within that were and where we actually earned our points. And so, you can see that the, we were just slightly below the state at 48.4%. And then what they do is they split that down into college ready and career ready. And so, we were at 36.7 college ready, with our biggest contributor being dual credit. And that really is to the, to the benefit, it is really because of the board's largesse that they have given the students at Waco ISD the opportunity to take dual credit at no charge, that we pay for their classes, we pay for their books, and because of that, we've seen a tremendous reaction from the students in terms of their willingness to take advanced classes and actually sign up for those. And that actually showed up as our strongest marker of, of all of them, other than the CTE sequence. You'll see also there, we've got the TSI reading and math, which we now have a plan in place that starts in the 8th grade with testing students to get them through those college-ready tests. You've got AP passing, and this new marker even gives the opportunity for our special ed students who are being trained for vocational work, for careers. If they graduate on an IEP that has got them career-ready, they actually also earn that status of college career military ready. So, that IEP, that's what that one is. And the Armed Forces one, you'll see that we don't have any students there, and that was because, truthfully, the state didn't do a really good job at communicating to districts that we needed to be putting that into PMS and reporting it, and so, many districts across the state got a zero for that. I will let you know, though, that I think when we, all was said and done, that for the class of 2018, that that was about 4%. So, we'll see a good gain in that for this, this next year. Finally, we've got our workforce certifications, that Ms. McThethan works so diligently to get our students to pass CNA, welding, precision metal, Adobe, and that actually accounted for 6.9% of our students hitting that marker. After they figure out those that all get a point, there's a .5 that a student can earn by completing a CTE sequence that is aligned to a national certification. And that really came about as a response from educators across the state, because originally, the state had cut CTE out of the college career military indicator altogether. And so, what they did was, they added it back in, but you only earn a half a point. So, we got 32.7% of the kids that earned a half a point for that marker. So, these go right along with our board goals, and we are carefully monitoring all of these with every senior this year to make sure that we know how many of them, at any point, have met that marker. Following that, you've got the SAT and ACT scores, and I've split them up both by the state and the district, but also by our different subgroups that are reported on the TAPER report. And so, you can see that we're about 90 points below the state on SAT. ACT, the next slide is a little bit more, is, has a little bit greater gap, because we offer the ACT to every junior in the district during the school day in October. So, when we're giving it to every student, not all of the students feel like they're going to go on to college or use it, so they don't all take it as seriously as they should, which impacts our overall number. But when we look at the actual participation in the ACT, we are about 25% above the state average for participation. So, we've got our kids now getting exposed to the test. We put new interventions in place for our students this year before they took it in October, so we expect to see a good gain on this score for next year's TAPER report. Following that, you'll get our enrollment by, in our special programs. So, you'll see that we're just slightly below the state in bilingual ESL and career and technical education. We're slightly above in gifted and talented, and we were at that 7.5% special education rate because of the previous cap on the special ed, but we have actually added almost a percent to that this year with better identification of our students in the district. The next thing that has to be reported in this meeting, according to Texas statute, TEC 39.053, are any violent and criminal incidents that are made at campuses in the district, and that we have to report the number, rate, and type of incidents. And really, the way that the state has us report this, this information, it is very difficult for us to report them as criminal incidents, because even though there might be an arrest, we never know if that is overturned, if the student actually, it has made a misdemeanor, it's a felony, if they then appeal it. So, even working with the chief of police, we're not able to put a firm number to this. So, what we instead have looked at for the last couple of years is the number of expellable offenses that occurred within the district, and if you look at the next slide, you will see over the last four years what those look like. And so, last year, we made a good improvement in expellable incidents. That is, I can tell you from the district leadership team, something that we are paying attention to this year with Dr. Nelson's support, is really encouraging more positive behavior intervention so that we can continue to decrease these numbers. The next thing that is reported are, are students that enroll in public or independent higher education, and what those students, how those students actually perform once they get there. So, this chart that comes from the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board actually shows you the number of graduates from each of the high schools that enrolled in a four-year university, a two-year university, an independent college and university, but we have a tremendous number that fall into the not found category, and that is because not all public universities must report this data. And so, if we have a student that goes to Baylor, for instance, Baylor reports occasionally. You can look at the state data, and we'll see it for one year, then for three years, they don't report, then they report. And so, given the kids, the students that are in public education that we know of, you can see their, their performance once they arrived in the college and what their grades look like. And as we have a better focus, a continued focus on dual credit, and we send our students forward with a more solid understanding of the college level of performance, we will see these improve. I will say that, that as of this, the end of this year, it was the first time in seven years that we were at the state level percent of students that went on to higher education. We had, had gotten all the way up to about 7% below the state, but as of this year, we actually are at the state average. So, you have a page for university, and there's another page there for Waco High. And then, the other thing that the TAPER report does is it informs us of different difficulties or distinctions that our schools have earned. We are still in need of substantial intervention for our special education programs, which we are working on under our corrective action plan from last year's TEA visit. But more excitingly, we had 10 Waco ISD schools that earned performance distinctions this year. And so, you can see there a list of them, and I think it's really an amazing testament to the work that's been done when you see that we have formerly IR schools on there, like Carver and Indian Spring, that actually picked up two and three performance distinctions this year. Last, we wanted to include in this report, just so that it kind of framed this data, our improvement required campuses, and you can see there, over the last five years, the number of improvement required campuses in the district. And I think that that really says that we're moving in the right direction, that the gains that we're making on the state are actually helping our schools overall to perform better, and, you know, we have really high hopes for this year that that number will, that will replace the question mark as a zero. Any of the questions about the data in this report would go to Tammy Wheaton, our Director of District Assessment and Accountability, and anyone from the public that has questions about the data or how to read the report. There's actually a glossary that will be published with the report, and each of the campuses in the district will have copies of their TAPER reports available for parents on their campus with the glossary on how to read the figures that are actually contained within the report. So, that concludes my presentation. Does the board have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. McClanahan. Before we turn it over to the board, are there any members of the public that have any comments or questions?
Great.
All right. Hearing none, I will ask anybody on the dais who has any comments or questions. Mr. Sykes?
Thank you. Dr. McClanahan, going back to the approaches grade level, all grades writing.
Yes.
Hearing your explanation, it almost sounded like comparing to the other categories, that it almost sounds like, I think you referenced the focus on mathematics and reading, almost as if they were detracting from the writing.
Well, we know that in the current accountability system, that there's a larger focus on the overall score for the school in reading and math. And, but, you know, I'm a former English teacher, and I'm going to tell you, the middle school and high school kids are going to write, and Grace thinks the same thing about, about the elementary students.
Sorry, I missed that.
That we, we have a big focus on writing, because we both have an English language arts background. And so, with our comprehensive literacy plan, one of the things that we put into place were new expectations for writing for students at all grade levels. And so, we, we could see the problems last year, and that's what we really used as the catalyst to write the, the literacy plan, to make sure that we were addressing those things.
Well, it's just discouraging, my words, that possible increases in other categories would cause a decrease in one of the categories.
Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, Trustee Sykes, add to Dr. McClanahan's responses. You know, writing has been a phenomenon for several accountability systems, going back to the TOS tests. Another major issue that, that is requiring us to rethink how we train, what we expect from our classrooms, is that writing, for the record, is only tested in the 4th grade, in the 7th grade, and then one time in high school. So, if it's only tested in the 4th grade, you can imagine, at a school that has pre-K through 5, for the, let the record reflect, 4th grade writing cannot only be 4th grade's problem. They cannot start working on it the first semester of their 4th grade year. Likewise, they can't write in 4th grade and then never touch it again till 7th grade and think that we're going to have, so we're trying to start writing in our pre-K classrooms, all the way through our senior English projects, and it is a focus that, it's a phenomenon across the state. But, you know, I agree with you, Trustee Sykes, that, you know, we do focus on reading and math, but we also spend, we're asking everyone to write across the curriculum as well, every subject we have.
We've included it, actually, in our assessment plan for the district this year, that we are now testing writing in those off grades to make them have to write and respond to the data that they get back from those students.
Sykes, you have another question?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for that explanation. And then, going to the dropout rate, grades 9 through 12, certainly, the increases are above the, the state averages, okay, as well as the region, across most of the category, I mean, the groups. And I'm not sure, again, what you're identifying as actionable corrective action on those, but would be interested in perhaps additional comments regarding the dropout rates, 9 through 12.
Well, we actually, because of this, we had to prepare an entire district dropout plan and submit it to TEA, and I'll be happy to provide you all with a copy of that. But there are, the National Center for Dropout Prevention has established that there are 15 kind of levers that you can use to decrease dropouts, and we have aligned a lot of our programming, that we're doing things that we were already doing in the district in a little bit more organized fashion to actually work underneath those. That has, I've gone over that with all the principals, the counselors. I know that part of what we're doing with the Transformation Zone and the wraparound services, many of those have been identified as national dropout prevention measures that are research-based. So, the more that we provide those, the, the better our, our results are going to be. But, this was, this particular class, the class of 2017, their dropout rate was high enough that it, this actual dropout rate is a three-year average of your four-year, five-year, and six-year dropouts. That 2017 class was so high that it's, it brought the entire average up to above the previous two years. And so, you know, we, we did, once we saw this data, we spent a number of weeks. Ms. Sommerfeld, over at PMS and Counseling, and I went through and pored through data of students that might appear this year as dropouts against the district. We put a full press campaign where we tracked students down at work, we went to their houses, so that we could get them back in before the, the final date that we had to report to PMS. But, the fact is, is that if we get the kid back in and we get them graduated during the year, they're not going to count as both a dropout and a graduate in the same year. So, we are continuing, and one of the things that we've done, our highest dropout rate is at Brazos, because those are our most fragile, you know, secondary students. And so, Ms. Latchison, with her priority funds this year, actually hired a dropout prevention specialist, who was a previous case manager at CPS, who has a great deal of experience working with families of students who are at risk. And so, we're putting the efforts where we know the efforts need to be.
Thank you for that, and obviously, you're aware of how long we've focused on dropout rates and how much I think effort has been put into that. So, I'm very hopeful that these new interventions will be, pay, pay the rewards and the returns that we're hoping to. So, thank you.
Sure.
Dr. Nelson?
I'll defer to Mrs. Cordawick.
Cordawick.
One question I had was, I, I'm all for research-based theories and putting that into practical, practicals on campuses, and I appreciate looking at where most of our dropouts are coming from and being forward-thinking and trying to do the prevention that is necessary to make sure that they stay in school. I know that you said you were looking at the 15 levers that kind of could help with this prevention. I was wondering, had you guys gone and talked to the actual students who may be dropped out and see if there's, you know, a reoccurring theme and what that is, and ways to kind of utilize resources to kind of help them? I didn't know if that was...
Dr. Nelson?
Well, the answer to your question, Mrs. Cordawick, is absolutely yes. I personally have visited with students that are part of this data. I know I speak for Dr. McClanahan, Dr. McDermott, Dr. John Jenkins is also helping us with this particular aspect of our data, and we all have had a conversation at a home about why this kid is not coming to school. One of the places I would turn you to is on page 9, where we look at, you know, for us, 9 through 12 is obviously where a large, a large number of the students are, but for our 7th and 8th grade dropout rates, that's eight kids we're talking about. And you think about a kid that ends up being Hispanic, special education, and an English language learner, and for some reason, they drop out. That's just one of the kid, kid I talked to, getting pressure from his family to go work, 7th, 8th grade. That's what his daddy did. And so, I'm not saying that all Hispanic kids are in special ed and are English language learners, because that's absolutely not true, but there are some challenges when you start talking about the importance of a high school diploma. And once a kid gets to, you know, we know that, for us, we have systems in place that trigger alarms after three absences, and it culminates at 10 absences with filing on a kid. So, when you go to, when you go to dig into it, it really, it's a very complicated formula, and some, the parent is doing everything they can do to get that kid to school. I know there's been cases where parents says they drop the kid off every day, but that kid ends up being a dropout for some reason. We, as Dr. McClanahan said so well, we know that the kids at Brazos, they already are our most at-risk students. We call them MAR students, most at-risk, and that means many of them have children of their own. Many of them are already part of our criminal justice system. Many of them have already failed a grade. Many of them are over 20. And so, these are the kind of heart-to-hearts we're trying to have with these kids and just really get them to understand the significance of a public education, or free education, I should say. The other thing is, is you have to think of, one of the levers that we talked about, the 15, is move to another country. Well, I'm telling you right now, we know some, we know that many of our students, their mobility rate is high, as high as 30% at some of our schools. And yes, we have some kids that go from Hines to La Vega, and that's their mobility. But we also have some kids that go from Waco to Nuevo Laredo, and sometimes, we have difficulty identifying that that's the true lever. So, we have to really work with families and communication strategies, but there's no excuse for this data, whether it's eight kids or 80. The goal is to get our dropout rate to zero. We don't want to allow kids to leave our system without some type of training or preparation to pursue post-secondary education. So, I just wanted to answer your question that we do know these kids, we talk to them, we talk to their families, and we'll continue to do, student by student, that same strategy.
Spedis?
I personally, actually have, I concur with Dr. Nelson. I have talked to some families where their father says, "Well, he's not going to be, he's not going to get an education. He's going to work like I did, like I started." Which is mostly more likely construction or something like that. So, they need money in a household, so they, they put that student to work, to drop out of school. And another thing, do you have the percentage of ethnicity students, by ethnicity, where is the biggest dropout rate, Hispanic, African-American?
Yeah, that's what the, that's what those charts are split down by, by our ethnic groups. And so, we had, we had the, we had the largest increase this year in our ELL students, and we actually were down a tenth of a percent in our African-American students. Now, all of the numbers...
I think his point is, we have the percentages, but the N, N equals how many ki, I know, like 7th and 8th grade, it was eight kids total, that make up our whole dropout data. It's eight students. And so, the question will be, how many kids for 9 through 12?
Yes. Off the top of my head, I do not know... Yes. Off the top of my head, I do not know, because we're talking pages of names. Because remember, they're looking at the kids from three classes of students. And so, by this year, we're talking about the class of 2017, 16, and 15. And here, you know, a lot of it is also us really paying a little bit closer attention. Because if we have a student that gets to the end of the school year and they are not finished, like they still have tests that they need to take, STAR tests that they need to take, if they don't come and actually enroll in the district in the fall, they just think they're going to show up and take the tests, then they're counted as a dropout because they're not actually in our enrollment. And so, you know, we get kids that get to the end of the year, and we just need to make sure that we're making, that we're checking on those kids and getting them enrolled for the following year. And that's what Ms. Summerfeld and I went through every one of the kids to see, you know, make sure that we were reaching out to them, we were calling them, that we sent people to houses, so that we could make sure that we got those students back. But some of them, they disappear. I'm going to tell you, the data for the middle school, three of those students dropped into Waco ISD right before snapshot and were out of Waco ISD before the end of the same year. But they count against us because they were on our snapshot.
The other thing I think is important to respond to, Trustee Pettis, in our Transformation Zone, we have allocated five professional positions that are working with families of at-risk students. We believe that that will directly increase not only our attendance rate, because that's where they focus their time, is that kids who have missed three days or more, but we think that'll help our dropout rate as well. Last thing Dr. McClanahan mentioned that I want to emphasize is some of our coding. You know, if I'm a principal and a kid moves, well, I'm going to make one attempt to try to find him. I might make two attempts. What we need is, don't stop trying to find that kid till we know that they've been enrolled in another Texas public school. And sometimes, they may be out 10 days, and then they pop up. And so, those are the kind of kids that if we don't track those closely, they end up becoming dropouts on our data.
Do we have anyone that goes out and knocks doors, see where that child is?
We have a host of people that do that in our district. I don't have the exact number, but we can give you a presentation on that.
Other questions or comments? Dr. McClanahan, on a positive note, I want to acknowledge the efforts of you and the entire instructional staff. When we've got seven different campuses that are in the top 25%, either in closing the gap or academic growth in the entire state, that's, that's a very positive number to see. And so, thank you for your efforts and the efforts of everyone in that department, because that's, that indicates we are definitely going in the right direction. Other comments from up here? Then, unless you have anything to add, Dr. McClanahan?
Okay.
I will close the public hearing. And while everyone's here, it is 10 minutes of about 6:08. So, I will call to order the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We have a quorum present. And at this time, we're going to recess in the closed session under sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code.